In 2025 for the Village of Deerfield Board of Trustees. Roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby, absent. Trustee Metz Childers, absent. Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'm glad to see we have folks from the Shepherd Student Council here. If we could all rise and if you could please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Feel free.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are many people I see in the audience who are here to show respects for three people of our community who passed away. And I'm grateful for those in the room who have decided to take some time out of their evening and come here. And certainly grateful for those names who I'll mention and those individuals I'll mention. Glenn Coats, a former Deerfield Police Lieutenant, longtime resident of our village, and a member of the American Legion. Jeff Cross, longtime former Public Works Street Foreman, and Dave Turnbaugh, a former Deerfield Police Commander. If we could all take a moment of silence, think about them and in their memory. Thank you. Our sympathies to their families, friends, and loved ones. This time, I'd like to ask the Shepherd School Pact, the Shepherd, Representatives of Shepherd School, Maria Butera, who's the co-president, the president of the Student Council, to make a presentation about Shepherd School Pack the Place fundraiser. Come on up, guys. Maria, are you surprised by that? Maybe if you could please introduce the other ladies you have with you.
My name's Maria Butera. I'm one of the Shepherd Middle School co-presidents.
I'm Molly Kleiman. I'm the other co-president.
I'm Becca Lusardi. I'm the secretary.
I'm Sadie Mandel. I'm one of the co-community outreach leaders.
Thank you all for being here. Who would like to take the floor?
Oh, okay.
Go back to slide one. Thank you.
There we go.
Oh, wait, hang on. Okay, you got it there? All right, great.
Nice.
Wait, wait, just David.
Speaking of the mic.
There you go.
All right. Who's doing slide one?
If you guys don't pick it, I'm going to.
Please, you guys take it.
What is Pack the Place? Pack the Place is an event that Shepherd Middle School Student Council, along with the Deerfield Police and Fire Department, plan. Pack the Place is a basketball game that our eighth-grade girls and boys' basketball teams play against the Deerfield Police and Fire Departments. All funds raised go towards helping families of the Hundred Club of Illinois.
One hundred percent of the money that we raise go to the One Hundred Club of Illinois. This year, we raised over $6,300 for the One Hundred Club, which helps provide support to families of first responders killed in the line of duty and support active-duty first responders. The One Hundred Club provides resources, financial support, access to training, and moral support. Many of these families have special needs children who benefit from this fantastic organization. This year, we more than doubled the amount of money we raised compared to last year.
The pictures of the raffles at the event. So, the Shepherd Middle School Student Council would like to thank all of the local businesses. And these are City Barbecue, Deerfield Bakery, El Forno Taco Pino, Whole Foods, Emmy's Jewelry, Brunch Cafe, Guzmaní Gomez, and a lot more. Bolt Addiction, Eric's Bike Shop, Scoops and Cookies, SNFL Swag, Trader Joe's, Deerfield Chak Shack, Deerfield Tropical Smoothie, Deerfield McDonald's, Deerfield Chick-fil-A, and Card My Yard, and Sunset of Highland Four.
For what?
Oh, I messed up. For water.
These are some more photos from Pack the Place. So, we did our group photo like we did last year, and then one with the, oh, can you see me? Okay, all right. So then we did our photo with our eighth graders in the Police and Fire Department. So that is that one. Okay, and then we would like to just give one, a big special thank you for, to our Student Council Leader, Mrs. Greenberg, for giving her time for student council. And helping us throughout the year and putting on the event.
Also nine months pregnant, so.
Okay, and then another amazing thank you to the Police and Fire Department for their support, and especially Officer Maldonado for helping organize this amazing event. To the Village of Deerfield and David Fitzgerald for advertising our event on social media throughout the village. Thank you to the Deerfield Lions Club for their donation, and last but not least, especially thank you to our school and local community for attending, as well as Mary Oppenheim.
They didn't ask me to play. Trust me.
Just a brief note from our end as the first responders. We greatly appreciate, four years ago, Sidney came to me and said, you know, the Student Council wants to raise money and give it to the police department. I said, whoa, why don't we try to figure out, I have this great organization, have you ever heard of the Hundred Club of Illinois? The girls started researching it, or the Student Council started researching it, and it's been a successful building block each year. Like they said, we've raised more and more money, it's become more and more fun. We had, we actually had to delay the game this year because of the number of people that were out the door buying tickets. It's actually a really fun event. I think all of us in the back there enjoy going, enjoy playing in it. We will win one year before I retire. We'll see. But it's been a great time. I really appreciate the Student Council and their all hard work, Sidney and Rob, all your guys' hard work, all the hard work from the parents in the community, the dedication to the first responders back there, taking, you know, time off to come and represent. But eventually, what it comes down to is the amount of money that we raised, and I'm very excited to say that we raised $6,300 for the Hundred Club. From, without the Lions Club donation, we raised $4,396. And that's all from your guys' great efforts, the efforts raised from the Police and Fire End, joining together, just collaborating, working together as a community. So it's, you guys should be really happy and proud of yourselves. Would you guys like to donate to the chat with me? Yes.
Can you just take a few steps back?
Yep, and Caitlin has a couple words.
All right. I'm Caitlin. I'm the CEO of the Hundred Club. So I wanted to say thank you, and thank you to all of you for showing up. It is really fun to watch the middle schoolers take on the first responders. As a spouse of a first responder, I always like when you guys can give it out to them. So, good job. But know that the funds that you're giving do go back to support the community, and you have families residing in Deerfield who've lost a loved one in the line of duty. So know that those community members stepping up for them says a lot to them, and also the support that you get for your first responders. So, we deeply appreciate it and know that the funds are coming back to support your community as well. So thank you very much. Thank you to all of you again as well.
Thank you.
And if I could, Dan, I've mentioned this to the board before, I was privileged to attend this event. It was a wonderful night. I've lived in this town a long time, and I've been to a whole lot of events. This one was very special. It was such a community coming together. Everybody was happy. The game was great. It really was good basketball. None of our adults fell down. There were no injuries. We were very pleased. And it just was such a great example of everyone working together for a good result, for a good cause, and I think a good time was had by all. So I applaud all of you. It was a great event. Let's do it again.
First responders, students, Student Council staff, whatever, thanks again. And maybe first responders, you guys should start to up your game a little bit, so.
They were so close. One point, one point they lost by.
Do not tell that to Lauren. That's, that's, do not tell that to Lauren. She's gonna kick somebody's butt. Thanks again.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, truly.
Thank you. I now would like to read and then present a proclamation for World Down Syndrome Day. Down syndrome is a genetic disorder affecting one in 700 babies, or approximately 600 births per year in the United States. Occurring from an individual having full or partial extra copy of chromosome number 21, Down syndrome is a naturally occurring chromosomal arrangement, and one of the most common chromosomal, chromo- Chromosomal. Chromosomal conditions. And whereas individuals living with Down syndrome are independent, valuable, and active members of our communities who are dignified participants in a wide range of educational, occupational, social, and recreational activities. And whereas individuals with Down syndrome continue to face challenges of discrimination and bullying simply because they look different or sound different, the need for additional support for people with Down syndrome and community education around acceptance and inclusion is critical. And whereas Gigi's Playhouse Deerfield is a vibrant, community-driven space dedicated to providing free educational and therapeutic programs for individuals with Down syndrome and their families, as well as education to school and community groups. And whereas as part of a network of Down syndrome achievement centers, Gigi's Playhouse Deerfield serves to empower, inspire, and celebrate acceptance for all. They strive to create an environment where every person feels valued and supported and connected. Gigi's Playhouse Deerfield has been committed to making a positive impact and promoting inclusion. And whereas the date of March 21 represents the uniqueness of three copies of chromosomal 21 and celebrates individuals with Down syndrome. And whereas this year, the 13th anniversary of World Down Syndrome Day, declared by the United Nations in 2012, supporting individuals with Down syndrome and all those who advocate for them. And whereas individuals with disabilities have the right to be treated fairly and have the same opportunity as everyone else, working with others to improve their lives. Now therefore, I, Daniel C. Shapiro, the mayor of Deerfield, of the Village of Deerfield, do hereby proclaim March 21, 2025, as World Down Syndrome Awareness Day. And urge the residents of the Village of Deerfield to take cognizance of this event and to participate fittingly in its observance. Proclaim the 17th day of March 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Berg. Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro.
Yes, with pleasure, and the motion carries. I'd now like to present the proclamation to Sherri Spath of Gigi's Playhouse Deerfield.
Yes, please. I need the moral support. So my name's Shannon Karen, and I have the distinct pleasure of being our only staff member at Gigi's Playhouse, and I have the luckiest job in the world. It is our mission statement to be, to change the way the world views Down syndrome and to be accepted and embraced in our schools, families, and community. And the community is a big piece of that because it can be scary for families when they get the diagnosis, and typically, the first thing that they do is overcome the fear, and then they accept their own child, but their question is always, what happens next? What happens in their schools? What happens when we bring them out into the world, and will the world accept them as well? And it's nice to be in a community where we can say that that will happen. They always say that when you get invited to the table, that's what acceptance looks like, but when you get a voice at the table, that's what true inclusion is. And so we thank you for giving us a voice today. It really does mean a lot to us. We wouldn't be anything without the community that supports us. We are run by volunteers and one staff member, so the incredible people in Deerfield have helped us by volunteering at the playhouse, donating to our fundraisers, to our events, to everything that we're doing there. And then we also serve many participants who live in Deerfield. So this is a huge piece of what we do, and Deerfield has our heart always. So thank you for that. And then we also want to give you a gift. World Down Syndrome Day is this Friday. We talked about how it happens when there are three copies of the 21st chromosome, and so we celebrate World Down Syndrome Day on the 21st of March. And we celebrate by rocking cool socks, because chromosomes, if you look at them under a microscope, look like little pairs of socks. But when you have an extra chromosome, you can't have a match. So we wear mismatched socks on Friday in honor of that extra chromosome that makes the incredible people that we know and love. So, we're bringing you all socks. We have a special gift for Mayor Shapiro as well. So thank you very much.
While you're passing out the socks, you have a voice here. You have a presence here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And you have
Thank you.
inclusion here. And you, and you, you, Gigi's, and those who participate are welcome here with open arms. Good. Thank you. Love it.
You have to trace, you get your mismatched pairs.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I love them. Very nice. Soft socks. Never get, we never get. Bye, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
If there was something we said, I'm so sorry about that.
Now the boring part. Thank you. Thank you.
Vicky is gonna be so happy. I got more socks.
They're awesome. They are awesome. They are, they're awesome. I love them.
What did I get?
I love them. Oh, God. Mine are good. I got purple. It's awesome. My great kids always wear mismatched. That's awesome. It's a thing.
It is a thing, right?
All right, moving right along to bills and payroll.
Nope.
Sorry. Moving right along to the minutes of our previous meeting of March 3, 2025, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The motion carries. Bills and payroll, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now is the time of our meeting where we offer the public an opportunity to make a comment about an item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone tonight that would like to make a comment about a matter that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, let's move right to our reports. Item 2523, consideration and action on the Plan Commission's recommendation for approval of the 2025 zoning ban.
Two changes. We've got the strip that's by the Deerfield Mall that the Metro used, they still own, but we're rezoning that, and then the Pulte development off of Willmont Road. Plan Commission unanimous recommendation for approval.
Trustee comments or questions? Is there a motion for, to accept the Plan Commission's recommendation? So, second. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
And Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Motion carries. There's nothing on our consent agenda nor old business. Under new business, item 2524, a resolution to award a contract for the 2025 Hazel Avenue lead service upgrade.
Good morning, Board. As you know from last year's budget discussions, the village budgeted $75,000 this year for lead service land replacements along Hazel Avenue. The intent behind this is to redo all the, when we redo all the water main system in that proximity, to redo the, to replace the lead service lines as well. So with the project, we only go from the main to the parkway. This endeavor would take us from the parkway into the home. The village has identified about 15 lead services along this project, hence the $75,000. However, it's possible that additional lead service lines may be encountered as we unearth the lines. The purpose of our involvement is to financially assist residents that may otherwise not feel inclined to do so. It is kind of under our timeline, so we want to provide this incentive to see it accomplished. We did this last in 2023 with the Waukegan Road project. We've learned some things. One of the things we're looking to do this time that's a little different from the previous project is that we're looking to utilize one contractor that would be able to perform multiple addresses versus letting the, letting the residents select their own contractor. And so we may have, in this case, one contractor to perform 12 addresses versus, you know, maybe 12 different contractors performing one inch. So we're looking to try to minimize those costs to the residents. We've knocked down the permit fees. This also with the, with the project being under construction, there's no restoration cost on the backend too. So not only logistically with the road construction going on right now, but also financially, it's a huge incentive to see this completed as part of our capital improvement program. So we recently met with three different contractors. We toured three different basements. All contractors have the ability to do, availability and ability to do this. We received a lowest quote from Demuth, Inc. at $6,500 per installation, given the amount and the possibility for fluctuation on that amount, and given the, the amount of the cost and our, and our budgeted amount, we're looking to contribute $4,500 per each service. So that leaves a resident for the $2,000 bill to replace their, to fully replace their lead service line, which is a huge deduction for someone would get on a regular day. So, staff is requesting to approve the resolution to award the contract for the 2025 Hazel Avenue lead water service upgrades to Demuth, Inc. at a cost not to exceed $72,000. And this would be per contract. So if we only get 12 signed up, it's only 12 times that $4,500, and it's done at the completion. So they'll put the new service in. It'll include a full hookup on both sides, concrete restoration in the basement. It does not include specialty things like tile, or painting, or drywall, things like that. So that type of finished carpentry, we are leaving to the resident and their preferred contractor to perform. But this will be a huge cost saving, you know, working in this regard. We are not requiring each resident to use this contractor either. They're still free to use their contractor of choice. We just, we kind of took a little bit of an additional step this year and went out and sought quotes from contractors.
Do we pay the contractor and then the homeowner pays us?
We will pay the contractor our portion, so that each resident will pay the $2,000, or, and it could fluctuate if there's this, you know, we looked at the standard installation, so 50-foot, give or take. If there's a longer service, 150 feet, or if there's stuff on the interior that makes it a little bit more difficult, there could be additional costs. But on a standard installation, it'll be about $2,000 per homeowner. And this is another break from the norm. Usually, we seek, we would reimburse the homeowner. They would pay the full bill. But it's a little bit disingenuine, maybe, maybe is the wrong term, but for them to front the $4,500, if we're trying to do this and provide a financial incentive for them to do it so.
So we pay our portion, the homeowner pays their portion?
That's correct. We would pay ours at the completion of the certified permit.
Do we have any liability if the homeowner doesn't pay?
So I've talked with the contractor to just, they should do that, they should get that fund, because usually it's a 50% down, how most contractors will work. I've encouraged them to get that, that resident share, whatever that may be upfront.
Tyler, what's our experience with the installations along Waukegan Road? Have any of our homeowners opted not to do this?
There have been a couple. And I do presume we'll, we'll never be perfect, but we're removing as many obstacles as we financially can
Yeah.
outside of paying for the full thing.
Yeah.
The proposal that is in this packet is signed and executed by the homeowner, so this is technically still a, an agreement between the homeowner and the contractor. We're just offsetting that cost through the permit process and through the completion of the lead service line. So our experience, Waukegan was a tough one. Again, we had maybe five or six that took us up on this. Being on Waukegan Road was a very difficult installation. The costs were actually higher than this. But that, that kind of thinking, because we didn't see, even though people had marked trucks out there doing the work, we didn't see a contract used, used more than once. So that was kind of spurring our thought of, hey, let's look at this differently, let's economy of scale this, because ultimately, we have a stake in this too. So we're trying to minimize all the costs. The permit costs have been basically zero. Actually, it is zero. We've waived all fees. The new meter
Right.
is included, just trying to incentivize as much as we can these homeowners to do this work, so.
And if someone opts not to have it done, we are still replacing the lead service that's in the parkway that's on the village property.
That's correct.
So we're doing as much as we can.
To the B-Box, right?
Exactly.
Yes, that's correct. So, and part of that, though, we will be required through the IDPH and through the Lead Notification Act
Yep.
to obtain a signed waiver.
Right.
Basically, that resident then, because it, they would, basically, they saying, they're saying that we understand that you're trying to replace this, we don't want you to, and for whatever reason, they don't need one, but I don't want anyone in my house, or I'm selling it, or what have you.
Yep.
So they would sign that waiver, and that would basically be our, you know, our proof that, to the state that we made our effort.
We're trying to meet the requirements.
Correct.
Thank you.
And if they don't sign the waiver, we documented it. That's all we can do as well.
Right.
We've had, I've seen people who have even refused to sign the waiver, and you can't make somebody sign a piece of paper.
Right.
But ultimately, for a homeowner that decides not to do it, it's gonna be harder to sell your home.
Absolutely.
For sure. And you may find yourself, if you ever have a break in a service line, you're gonna be stuck repairing it all yourself.
Right.
And if you ever want to do an addition or something that requires an upgraded water service, you'll have to do it then.
Right.
So.
And we can advise people of these facts.
We will, yeah. And we tried on Waukegan. We were not 100% successful on Waukegan. We did have folks that even neglected to sign the waiver, but it was through emails that we've documented that communication. And we'll use that in lieu of a waiver with the state.
And we're gonna be dealing with this.
For a long time.
For a long time. So, don't feel like this is the end of this conversation, because this, on the other hand, let's get the best, let's get the best outcome we can when we do our stuff. But no, I don't want to prick you guys that this isn't coming back. There's gonna be a follow-up policy, but let's, let's fix them while we can, and this is a good opportunity to fix them, and then we'll follow up with what we need to follow up with.
How is Hazel Road coming along so far? Sorry.
No, that's fine. They started by ripping the band-aid off. They showed up last Wednesday with two crews. ComEd also showed up that day, so it was a lot of, lot of traffic, or a lot of construction traffic, I should say. But we have the detour set up. A lot of people are going around, which is good. The schools, I just talked with them this morning, minimal if any complaints. They're, they're working with their bussing, bussing companies to kind of move that, move their bus stop to block away, so that, you know, they're not having kids standing on those streets. So, all things considered, I still think we're in the honeymoon phase, but ask me in a month, and, but I hope to say that we're still humming right along. So we've, there's a lot of coordination, a lot of ComEd, AT&amp;T, Comcast that we're dealing with. We've got underground conflicts almost every day that we're trying to pivot around residential concerns as well, so. But we're, we're treading water. We're doing, I think, it's going, it's off to a great start, I would say. Not, not to jinx it.
Good.
It's a hard job.
Tyler, thank you, and I would remind the Board, this is the last collector street that we will have rebuilt in the last 17 years. Willmore, Deerfield, Lake Cook Road, Waukegan Road. Wilmore, Deerfield, Lake Cook Road, Waukegan Road, Hazel and Greenwood. So we are finishing, one of the things, the one you guys brought me in here was about, we're gonna talk about this.
Right.
So we are finishing the last collector street in Deerfield, which is awesome. So thank you.
One last thing, just as we pivoted kind of from 2023 to this one, we're kind of critiquing our, the program that Ken alluded to that we'll be going over maybe in a month, could even look a little slightly different, you know, because that one will be village-wide. But we're, we're always looking for the best, you know, program to put out there and the most financially viable.
It's not an easy thing, and we appreciate your hard work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Move approval of the resolution?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
And Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Thank you.
Events for discussion by the mayor and the Board of Trustees. We have a lot of good stuff going on, which includes the second item here, the opening of our town on the 28th of March by the Park District. We have six projects that are underway, residential projects that we, over the last couple of years, have approved. There are cranes in the ground. There's stuff, active stuff that's, that's happening, which are the fruits of all of our hard work, staff, and everyone in this room's hard work. That's really good stuff. It's exciting to see. And there's more to come. But we also have some other stuff that's not so good. And that was on the 14th, nine of our local businesses were the victim of a smash and grab. Not just here, but in other communities too. River Woods, Northfield, and prior to the 14th, the week prior, was Highland Park. So, in other communities, North, wherever, there are many communities that have faced this. It's not fun. It's scary. I know our police are hard at work doing what they need to do to investigate this. We are here to try to offer whatever support we can to the businesses and to the residents that are facing this. But in the meantime, there are a number of things that our residents and our businesses can do to help make sure, not make sure, but to help safety. Nothing is for sure, but these things-
Reduce their risk.
But these things can help minimize our risk. Close all the doors. Lock them. Ensure that all doors and vestibules and common areas are locked. Report suspicious activity. When you see something, say something. Verify your alarm systems, and if you don't have one, maybe get one. But verify that the alarms, the cameras, that et cetera, are functional and updated. Maintain sufficient interior lighting. Leave cash registers that are visible from the outside of the store. Do not leave, sorry, do not leave overnight cash registers that are visible. Do not leave stuff open that can be visible from the outside, from people walking or driving by. Post signs stating that there's no money on the premises. Post signs that says that it's under surveillance. And stay vigilant. So, we are with you businesses. We are with you residents. This is an unfortunate thing, and we're doing everything we can do to keep our businesses from being burglarized and our residents from staying, from being harmed. Other stuff that's going on, on the 16th, we have our committee of hold at 5 o'clock in this room. On the 1st, our, our local elections. Deerfield has its early voting at Deer, Deer Spring Pool.
Starts today.
Right.
Which starts today. Yes, thank you. And that's, that's what I got. So, does anyone, can't you have something?
I don't have anything else, but I would like to echo the mayor's comments on just being supportive of our local businesses. Said, you know, I think the day, and John Chief, the day after the Highland Park incidents, we submitted to all of our local businesses another letter of advice. But the letter of advice doesn't stop the bad guys from doing the bad guy thing. But know that we are pleased, for the Board's perspective, know that we are in constant contact with our local businesses, and we want to help them be as safe as they can be, even in spite of the crap that people throw at them. Sorry, didn't dig it there. But John, John, is there anything you want to add to that? I mean, I- Sorry, that's, 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 that's my comment is, we gotta be, it's, it's like we had a car stolen today, or over the weekend, and the car stolen was with a fob in the car from the driveway. You just, you know, common sense.
Let's not make it easy for the bad guys.
It's not, we're not telling anybody to be smart, you know, it's just, but, but don't, don't make yourselves the object of, of opportunity crime. And that's what John would say. Don't make yourself easier to be victimized than anybody else. And one way to do that is to keep your fob in your car.
But the lesson to be learned is that it can happen anywhere.
Right.
Exactly. No one is safe if you're unsafe, if you don't try to be safe.
Right.
So, you know, sometimes we're fooled into thinking we're an island where things can't happen to us that happened to the rest of the world, and it's not true. So, that's, you know, I have read on social media over the last few days, and I happened to be in one of the business that was, businesses that was vandalized that very next morning. And actually, the mayor was calling the manager as I was there, and she was so touched. She was very, very appreciative that we reached out to them and we cared. But what I hear from people is that, let's go out and let's spend some money. Let's go patronize these businesses. So I, I am hearing that the community is pulling together with this, and that's a good thing. So, maybe some good will come out of this.
And if there, if there was ever anything to be optimistic about was a store in Highland Park that apparently was careful enough each night. And when the, the story was that when they broke in, the only thing they took was a bowl of candy and left. That was all that was available. She said it was a little strange, but she could work with that. One other thing I want to mention is, I'd like to welcome back Bob. Thank you. So you had a little bit of leave of absence, and we're glad to see you back on the dais and back with us. Stay, stay strong and welcome back. Thank you. Any comments from the trustees? All right. So I would now entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 C15, C14, sorry, C5, C14, C11.
2C5.
Let me try it again.